Well, good afternoon and welcome to the March 7th, 2024, open session of the National Capitol Planning Commission's meeting. It's a beautiful day in the Capitol and we're happy to be meeting again. Agenda item number one. Ms. Koster, can you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Kozar?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham?
Here.
Commissioner Argo?
I'm here.
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 And Commissioner Argo, we're very glad that you're here and we'll continue to, our IT people will continue to work with you on that. Chair Hewlett?
Vice Chair Hewlett, I'm here, present.
Sorry. Chair Goodman?
I'm present as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Cash, or excuse me, Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash told me he would not be present. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Great. And Commissioner Jacchetti? Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan with the Urban Design and Plan Review Division are also in the meeting. We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Koster. With the presence of quorum, I'm calling the meeting to order. And just a reminder, today's meeting is live streamed and it's going to be available in a few days as a video on the NCPC website. Can we now have someone please play the short video of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. NCPC will continue to conduct these meetings online until the renovations on the commission chambers are complete. I want to share how we will be conducting the commission business today as we have in past meetings. Following our staff presentations and any other testimony, I will ask for a motion and a second as appropriate. During the commission deliberations, I will use the round robin format to ask each of the commissioners if they have any comments. At other times when commissioners wish to be recognized, I would ask that you unmute and ask to be recognized. And item two is reported to the chair, and I want to say that I had a busy month last month. And it was very productive, I think. I had the opportunity to meet with two of the federal agency leaders that are our partners. On February 2nd, I met with National Park Service Director Charles Sams to discuss our shared interests in initiatives such as the Beyond Granite program that was inaugurated this past year, fall and August. We also discussed flooding and also our stewardship of the National Mall. Our meeting, then a meeting yesterday on March 6th, I met with the Smithsonian Secretary Lonnie Bunch, and that too was a very productive meeting. We discussed our shared visions and interests, particularly around, again, flooding that's threatened the properties and the historic treasures that we value here in the Smithsonian. But we also talked about how we can continue to interpret our nation's history through the spaces that we share and also through the, you know, the passion we share with the Smithsonian to preserve the history of the country. I attended the February 26 reconvening of the Future of Federal Workplace Roundtable Discussion, which NCPC co-sponsored with the Council of Governments. And following the release of the recent study on the federal workplace, we asked federal agency leadership and regional leaders to come back together again to discuss additional actions and collaborations. It was a productive conversation. And with all of this business that we've been conducting in between the commission meetings, I just want to say that I'm continually impressed by the leadership and the quality of the staff of NCPC and very grateful for their work. So, thank you to all of you. Agenda item number three is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Chair Goodman, and good afternoon. On February 29th, NCPC initiated the 30-day public comment period for the Little Falls Parkway Improvement Project in Montgomery County, Maryland. The scope identifies topics and areas of analysis for the environmental assessment. An online public meeting to discuss the scope is scheduled for Tuesday, March 12th at 7:00 PM. Further information is available online at our website. We expect this project to come before the commission in the late spring or early summer. I will also note that the public comment period for the proposed comprehensive plan, federal element introduction chapter, and submission guidelines update will close on Tuesday, March 12th, and those comments can be submitted via our website. This concludes my report. You do have your, my written report in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Does the commission have any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number four. Is there a legislative update today, Ms. Skyler?
Yes, there is, Madam Chair. I'd like to report on House of Representatives Bill 4984, which is entitled the DC Robert F. Kennedy Memorial Stadium Campus Revitalization Act. This bill passed the House on February 27th of this year, and it was referred to the Senate two days later. I'm going to be brief because I know we have a long agenda, so basically the bill requires the Department of Interior to transfer jurisdiction of the Robert F. Kennedy Memorial Stadium to the District of Columbia, and it allows the district to use the campus for stadium purposes, commercial residential development, facilities, open space, public outdoor opportunities, and such other purposes for which the campus was used or approved prior to June 1st of 1985. More importantly, it also allows demolition so that they can facilitate development and use of the campus. That's, that's, that's it. That's my legislative report.
Okay, well, thank you.
Well, thank.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very.
Ms. Skyler, I'm getting some reverberation there. Do any of the commissioners have a question for Ms. Skyler regarding this report? No questions. Hearing none. Agenda item number five is the consent calendar. The consent calendar has one item this month, and that is the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge Rehabilitation Project submitted by the National Park Service to approve the final site development plans with comments. Are there any questions or discussion on this consent item?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent item.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I will second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon and Vice Chair Hewlett. Ms. Koster, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote?
Vice Chair Hewlett made a motion to approve the consent calendar. Commissioner McMahon seconded. Commissioner Kozar?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo? I'll return to Commissioner Argo in a moment. Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Brudgingly, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
All right, and I'll just circle back to Commissioner Argo. I don't, if you want to just provide a thumbs up on the consent calendar, we'll take that as a yes. I can see you. Alrighty, we'll keep working on it then. Thank you. That motion has carried. Chair Goodman?
Thank you. Thank you very much. The motion has carried. Agenda item 6A is a request to approve the preliminary site development for the Texas Legation Memorial. Ms. Hare is making a report today in the presentation.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. The National Park Service, in collaboration with the Daughters of the Republic of Texas, has submitted preliminary development plans for commission review and approval of the Texas Legation Memorial on Indiana Avenue Northwest. Just a couple of quick reminders of the memorial commemorative process. We are at the preliminary review for this memorial, as noted here. The National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission and the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts also review the preliminary design for comment and approval. While the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission has an advisory role over commemorative works, the Commission of Fine Arts and NCPC have approval authority on site and design. The commission previously reviewed site selection in December 2021. The review criteria outlined in the Commemorative Works Act for site and design approval noted here includes locating the work in surroundings that are relevant to the subject in a location that does not interfere with an existing work. The location should also protect open space and existing public use, as well as cultural and natural resources. In 2020, under Public Law 116-248, Congress authorized the Daughters of the Republic of Texas to build a commemorative work in Washington DC to commemorate and honor those who, as representatives of the Republic of Texas, served in the District of Columbia as diplomats to the United States and made possible the annexation of Texas as the 28th state. The proposed memorial is located on Indiana Avenue Northwest, which was Site F, Option 1 during site selection. During the commission's review of site selection, the commission provided favorable comments on this site. As a reminder, this location was selected due to its proximity to locations important to the Texas legation, as noted here. The memorial site is an existing planter surrounded by a low stone cloud wall. The site is located between the Argentine Naval Attache Building and a public sidewalk on the south side of Indiana Avenue Northwest. The existing site pictured here is approximately 20 feet by 27 feet. It's a planter containing small trees and two small light fixtures and surrounded by a low wall clad in granite. The existing trees and lights will be removed to accommodate the memorial. As part of the memorial design process, the applicant studied existing memorials in the area for context. The proposed memorial space includes two main elements, the stone memorial and the landscaping. The design for the stone memorial element includes a star-shaped stone base topped with a Pentagon-shaped memorial plinth. The applicant is proposing the star base and plinth constructed out of white Mount Airy granite and topped an 11-inch diameter Daughters of the Republic of Texas Historic Sites medallion. On the three sides of the plinth closest to the sidewalk, the applicant is proposing three memorial engravings telling the story of the Texas legation, a map of the Republic of Texas, and the Republic of Texas diplomats sent to Washington DC. Here are the plinth panel details. The proposed text size for the left and right engraving face is proposed at one-half inch, and the applicant has shifted the memorial six inches closer to the edge of the planter bed based on staff feedback. This section shows the proximity of visitors to the memorial and the text panels, and staff requests the commission recommend the applicant continue to evaluate the size and treatment of the proposed memorial text to ensure it is easily legible for all visitors. The second part of the overall memorial design is the landscaping. The proposed memorial landscape is organized by two plant pallets oriented to the northwest corner where the memorial is located. A field of low-growing native evergreen sedge makes up the foreground, maintaining visual access to the plinth. Beyond the sedge is an interplanted field of native meadow plants to create a taller backdrop. The organic shape relates to the Brazos River Basin that defines the two distinct landscapes of Texas. Soil burmed at the rear southeast corner of the planter creates a subtle high point where a Sweet Bay Magnolia tree is located on a visual axis with the memorial. The solitary tree with its singular pronounced white blossoms represents the Lone Star State in Texas's time period as a republic. The two juxtaposed native planting zones recall the diversity, orientation, and unique breadth of Texas's ecological regions across the state. The selection of plants that compromise memorial are both native to Texas and native to the mid-Atlantic of Washington DC. The commission has received public comment indicating concern about the lack of pollinator species and the use of non-native species in the planting pallet. Staff notes that the memorial is modest in size, has a very clear theme, and finds that this is appropriate for such a small area and supported by our recent guidance for both native and cultural landscapes. The applicant has addressed the comments from staff and the commission thus far, and staff recommends the commission approve the preliminary site development plans for the proposed Texas Legation Memorial located on Indiana Avenue Northwest. This concludes my presentation. I've incorporated recommendations from the EDR into the presentation, so I will not read them. They are included here for your reference. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Sophie Kelly from the National Park Service has prepared some remarks, and representatives of the project team and the Daughters of the Republic of Texas are available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Good afternoon, commissioners. The National Park Service is happy to be before you today as the coordinating federal agency in the development of the Texas Legation Memorial. I'm Sophie Kelly, and I am the Chief of Staff for National Mall and Memorial Parks. As you've heard, in 2020, the Congress authorized the Daughters of the Republic of Texas to establish a commemorative work to honor those who, as representatives of the Republic of Texas, served in the District of Columbia as diplomats to the United States and made possible the annexation of Texas as the 28th state of the United States. The Park Service was pleased to work with the memorial sponsor on their site selection analysis that has brought us now to the design phase, excuse me, for the project. National Mall and Memorial Parks administers the site areas along Pennsylvania Avenue, including the approved location for the Texas Legation Memorial on the 600 block of Indiana Avenue off of Pennsylvania Avenue. The memorial will be under the stewardship of the National Park Service once completed. The memorial design team and collaboration with the Park Service has developed a concept for a modest memorial plinth and planted area. We appreciate the collaboration and guidance of NCPC and look forward to hearing your comments today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hare and Ms. Kelly. We appreciate the work that you've done. Do commissioners have any questions for the presenters before we entertain a motion? Hearing no questions, I want to make note of the fact that we do have Mr. Byrne will be providing testimony in addition to our presentation. And Mr. Byrne, when you're ready, please let me know.
Yes, I'm here.
Alright. Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to overlook you. I just wasn't paying attention to my notes. Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Go ahead.
Thank you. My testimony relates to the plant pallets, as will for two other projects up to consideration today. Several entries and omissions in these pallets are not consistent with the NCPC's new best practices resource guide. The guide highlights the need to plant common milkweed, a Sclapta serrica, to support monarch butterfly populations. However, the pallets do not contain any common milkweed. Please ask the applicant to plant the common milkweed within the plants project sunny areas. The guide states that a Department of Agriculture publication recommends the following with selecting plant species. 100% native species. Focus plant selections are native perennials that provide pollen-nectar rich foliage for pollinators and other beneficial insects, and love food plants for butterflies and moths. These are essential components of habitat needed to support a wide variety of wildlife. Now, the plant pallets for this project contain several, 11 shrubs and trees, grasses, and bulbs that are not native to the National Capitol region. I've identified these in a message that I've already sent to the NCPC. The worst of those that are native to Texas but are not native to this region, such as a red bud, that's a Texas red bud. It's kind of nice as it's Texas, but it is, it can become invasive. Some, some may become invasive or are invasive within the region. Some may not feed native pollinators. However, there's an exception. There's few if any bulbs are native to either region. The plant pallets can therefore contain bulbs if they are not already identified as invasive. Please therefore ask the applicant to replace all non-native plants, including the Texas red bud and the other Texas plants, except for non-invasive bulbs with species that are native to the National Capitol region. The plant pallets contain seven cultivars. However, the NCPC guide says, states, take care when selecting plant cultivators. Cultivars, some are selective of traits, are attractive to humans but not attractive to humans but not to pollinators. Sometimes these selections or cultivators lose their traits and indicators on which pollinators rely, in others they won't support pollinators. Further, the leaves and stems of some cultivars are toxic to insects. Please therefore ask the applicant to remove all seven cultivars from the landscaping. The applicant should replace these with the cultivars native parents, if there are any. The staff has reviewed this and said it's okay to put these Texas natives that are not, that are not native into the, they're not native into the planting, but this is really wrong and is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Byrne? Any questions? Hearing none, that concludes the public testimony. And I'll start with a motion to approve the preliminary site development plans for the Texas Legation Memorial. Is there a motion?
I so move, Madam Chair, including the recommendation as enunciated by staff and by Ms. Hare and also in the staff report.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sorry, thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. And is there a second?
Second.
And thank you, Commissioner Stidham. And so we have a motion here?
Yes, so Vice Chair Hewlett made the motion, and there's a second. I also wanted to note that Commissioner Peter Warren has joined the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Peter. Alright, so the motion has carried. Now we open up for discussion with the commission. Can everyone please turn on your cameras and your mics? And we'll begin with Commissioner Argo. Are you prepared, Commissioner Argo? I'm going to move on to Vice Chair Hewlett. Could you begin, please?
I don't have any additional comments, other than maybe since we've now heard from Sir Byrne, if we could have some feedback on his comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you. No additional comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wright?
I don't have any comments either. I just, I wish every memorial were this easy to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Dixon?
Yeah, I'm okay, and I'm okay with it. It's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Davis?
Sorry, I was in trouble with the unmute button there. No additional comments from me. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Jacchetti? Or Commissioner Warren?
No comments, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Kozar?
No comments from me. Thanks to the staff for their work on this and their report.
Very good. Commissioner McMahon?
Yeah, no, a fine, subtle, understated monument to the purpose. I kind of like that part. Looking to see if there's response from the applicant concerning our comments about the pallet of plants being selected before we vote, but no comments.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham?
No comments. Thank you for the report. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And Commissioner Argo, I'm going to circle back, but I presume there might still be some hiccups there, Ms. Koster, so I will ask staff if they could respond to commissioner's request for some input on Mr. Byrne's testimony.
Certainly, and perhaps we can start with Jamie Hare to provide that and then to the Park Service as needed.
Yes, so the Park Service actually did provide a response, and I don't know if I want to read it for them or allow Ms. Kelly to read it. I can, I can do either.
Feel free to read it and we can.
Okay, alright. Okay, so in regards to the comment about milkweed, it says, given the limited memorial area, a 500-square-foot planter, we could accommodate only a correspondingly minimal plant pallet and do not believe the Sleepy Surracha, sorry, I butcher these words, meets the project's design goals. Regarding the native species, at the request of the client, and in order to best support the narrative regarding the Texas legation, we selected plant species that were native to either the mid-Atlantic region, portions of Texas, or both. The proposed concept includes magnolia, several plants I cannot pronounce. For some of the alternatives presented, an adaptive plant species was selected to support the identity of Texas's heritage, including autumn more grass and Mexican feather grass. The bulb alternative shown are representative only and can be amended, though native bulb species are limited. Regarding cultivars, native cultivars often allow us to achieve greater ornamental appearance, more predictable height, and in some cases, greater resilience than straight species. This facilitates our design response in urban, public spaces like this one, where sightline, safety, aesthetics, and maintenance are significant concerns. Staff did review this response and believes that the proposed memorial is in keeping with our, with our guidance, as it is small in an urban setting, and we are okay with the plants proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hare, Ms. Kelly, did you have any other further comment?
I don't. I believe that response reflects the analysis that we undertook in terms of the landscape development. We acknowledge that this is, as a commemorative works project, is a new project and that we are meeting the subject matter for which the Congress authorized the memorial, so we're, the landscape pallet is respecting the subject matter while also looking towards species that will be durable and maintainable and persistent, be beautiful for many years. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just wanted to make my final comments. I want to thank Mr. Byrne because I think he's given us a good compass as we look at climate and climate change and, and the impacts of what we are stewarding in our nation's capital for plantings, whether they are trees or shrubs or flowers, it's, it's important to keep in mind these pollinator issues. So I do appreciate Mr. Byrne's comments. And overall, I do find that the National Park Service and partners have developed a modest memorial and the landscape plan that is focused with a clear theme, and I support that. At the same time, I do want to just continue to call us to mind that the policies we've, we've created around these plantings so that we can be sensitive to the, to the needs of the local pollinators. So, are there any further questions or comments? Ms. Koster, would you like to confirm the motion, the second, and take the roll call, please?
Certainly. Vice Chair Hewlett made the motion. Commissioner Stidham seconded. And with that, Commissioner Kozar?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
I'll note that Commissioner Argo is still having some tech difficulties. We hope she'll be able to rejoin the meeting. Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
Commissioner Warren?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion has carried.
Thank you very much, Ms. Koster. Agenda item 6B is a request to approve comments on concept plans for the Pentagon Metro Pedestrian Access Control Point. And Ms. Free is going to be making a presentation. Ms. Free?
Yes, can you hear me and see my screen? Yes, okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. The Department of Defense Washington Headquarters Services has submitted concept plans for proposed pedestrian access control point, or PACP, located near the Pentagon Metro Rail Station entrance. The PACP is a proposed addition to the Pentagon building and will provide the Pentagon Force Protection Agency with increased capacity and capability to screen employees for potentially hazardous devices prior to entering the Pentagon. As this is a concept review, the focus of today's presentation and analysis is to receive commission comments and feedback prior to
prior to preparation of a more detailed preliminary submission. In this case, the focus of the review is understanding the appropriateness of the project for the site and the context. Under and identifying any stakeholders that may need to be further involved. I will provide an overview of the proposed PACP today, which includes two building design alternatives for consideration. Staff is recommending that commission approves the comments on the concept plans to be used as guidance in developing a preferred alternative in the next submission. Before I review the proposal, I'll briefly cover the existing site conditions and context. The PACP will be located on the southeast side of the Pentagon, directly across from the Pentagon Transit Center, which is a major intermodal transit node that receives several regional bus services and the blue and yellow Metro Rail lines. As such, staff finds that the new PACP is an important addition to the Pentagon building as a highly visible public threshold frequented daily by employees and visitors arriving by Metro Rail or bus. The proposed PACP is an addition to the existing Metro Entrance Facility or MEF, which is identified here on the slide as number two. The MEF is a limestone addition to the Pentagon building located directly across from the Womata Bus Terminal, which is shown here as number one. A visitor's center shown here is number five, is attached to the MEF, and a series of covered walkways shown here is number four. Connect these structures with the two metro escalators, which are shown here as number three. Here we have a look around the project site. In images one and three, you can see the existing metro escalator canopies and covered walkways, which flank the MEF where the employees currently enter the Pentagon building. The existing MEF best seen here in image number two is a symmetrical building with a double-height entrance volume with seven punched openings at the lower level and a glass canopy above. The existing MEF facade transitions to solid limestone above the canopy and terminates with a parapet. Here in section, we can see the below-grade conditions. The metro tunnel is directly below the site with the bus terminal on the left and the existing MEF on the right, which are built up to the metro tunnel boundaries shown here in black. The red line indicates the limits of the proposed PACP addition. The applicant is actively coordinating with Womata regarding the proposed development. Additional discussions will be necessary regarding construction and phasing to avoid impacts to transit users. And therefore, staff requests the applicant continue to coordinate with Womata to address any concerns related to the design and impacts to operations during construction. Here we have a look at how people currently circulate around the site. Most employees are entering the existing MEF from the metro escalators, with others arriving at the bus terminal. Covered walkways connect these pedestrian routes with the MEF. Non-employee visitors access the Pentagon through the visitor's center before entering the MEF and then ultimately the Pentagon building. I will now discuss the proposed site plan and landscape plan for the PACP, the building massing in height, and the two building design options. I'd like to first note that the concept plans presented today are a complete redesign of the former PACP preliminary plans reviewed by the commission in 2017, images of which are shown here. The former design included a canopy with skylights that covered the entire open space located between the bus terminal and the PACP. The commission's comments on the previous design focused on simplifying the design and context of the existing metro canopies, improving wavefinding and enhancing pedestrian circulation, and coordinating further with Womata. And staff finds that these comments have been addressed in the current application. Here we have the proposed site plan with the new 18,000-square-foot PACP addition. I will note that the site plan is the same in both design options, but the differences occurring in the building itself, which I will cover in a few moments. The existing covered walkways will be removed in an open plaza that separates the PACP, and the bus space will allow pedestrians to circulate freely. The proposed PACP is on axis with the Pentagon building and the existing MEF directly, located directly across from the bus terminal. The facility will include an entry vestibule, enhanced screening area, police stations, and related support spaces. And overall, staff supports the general location and footprint of the proposed PACP as it allows clear pedestrian access and circulation while accommodating program requirements. The proposed landscape plan includes raised plant beds to the south of each metro escalator and adjacent to the east and west sides of the bus terminal. Staff requests that all proposed plant material be native to the region with consideration for pollinator-friendly plant species, including common milkweed, and native ground covers or sedges are used in lieu of turf grass. In addition, staff recommends the applicant consider incorporating sustainable stormwater management strategies, such as a green roof on the proposed addition and, and the MEF, and permeable pavers in the plaza. The applicant conducted several massing studies to evaluate the form and the scale of the PACP addition with the goal of simplifying the overall assemblage of the architectural elements. These studies also help to inform the addition's overall impression as the public threshold to the Pentagon. Here you can get a sense for the different options considered by the applicant with a horizontal form consistent throughout. The massing studies consider the horizontality of other architectural elements on the Pentagon building as well as other entrances around the building and the historical references. Here we can see the horizontality created by the form of the existing Pentagon facade, the MEF wings, and the visitor's center. As a result, the new PACP addition will meet the height of the existing MEF wings at 19 feet, six inches tall. And staff supports the height of the new PACP addition respecting these datum lines to create consistency and a simplified form. The design approach for the PACP addition considered the existing stripped classical architectural style of the Pentagon building. Staff notes the Pentagon building is a national historic landmark, and therefore, the new PACP must create a distinct sense of arrival for pedestrians with a design approach that different, differentiates the facility as an addition to the Pentagon and is also compatible with the historic building. As a national historic landmark, the Pentagon building is one of the nation's most iconic government buildings. In accordance with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties, new additions should be contemporary but also compatible with the historic building to protect the integrity of the historic property and its environment. The applicant included several precedent images in the concept submission of modern additions to historic structures and inspired the design options for the PACP. These include the Washington Monument Visitor Center, the Harry Truman Building, uh, US Diplomacy Center, and the Federal Reserve Manor S. Eccles Building, all of which were reviewed by NCPC. As I've noted before, the concept plans include two design options. Both options have the same building footprint and general massing with variations in the treatment of the existing MEF and the proposed PACP building materials. Option one here on the left includes extending the top volume of the existing MEF, skylights in the double-height area, and a decorative bulkhead above the PACP lobby that is wrapped with channel glass. Option two here on the right includes, includes the existing top volume of the MEF remaining unchanged, skylights where the addition meets the MEF, and a decorative bulkhead above the PACP lobby wrapped with metal mesh. I'd also like to note that in both options, the project is also aiming to achieve lead silver certification. Staff recommends that the applicant evaluate if it is feasible to achieve lead gold certification, given the limited project size. And at a minimum, the project should achieve lead silver with a priority for renewable energy and energy-efficient credit points. Here we have a closer look at option one. You can see the horizontal form of the PACP addition that meets the height of the existing MEF wings with the glass lobby and a decorative bulkhead above that is clad with channel glass. In this option, the MEF is extended to about 15 feet from the south face of the PACP addition. The extension includes skylights and punched openings on the southern facade. Building elevations demonstrate an emphasis on symmetry and simplicity with the form and materials and the PACP building reading as distinct horizontal layers. You can see how the facade engages with the existing metro elevators here on the right side of the south elevation. On the left side, a solid panel is proposed to reinforce that symmetry. This is a bird's eye view of option one, looking at the south facade beyond the bus base and towards the Pentagon. This here is an eye level view looking towards the PACP and the Pentagon from the southeast. I'll point out that you can see here the MEF extension and how the PACP facade engages with the existing metro elevators, which will open onto the plaza. And another view from the southwest, looking towards the Pentagon. You can see the decorative bulkhead wrapped with channel glass above the glass lobby and how the addition transitions back to the MEF with solid panel walls. On the interior of the PACP, the entrance vestibule transitions to a grand 26-foot, 10-inch-height entrance lobby created by the extension of the MEF. This is a view looking toward the existing MEF entrance after one enters the PACP. You can see the existing punched openings and limestone columns with wood doors on the MEF facade. Onyx panels are proposed above the doors. Oh, I will, I will review option two. Option two does not include the double-height space at the center of the new addition as the existing MEF volume would remain unchanged. Also, a skylight is proposed where the PACP addition meets the MEF to bring natural light into the lobby. The building elevations are similar to option one, with the main differences being the metal mesh on the decorative bulkhead and the treatment of the existing MEF. The horizontality of the PACP addition is accentuated in option two as the extended MEF volume is less pronounced than the extruded version in option one. And staff finds the existing MEF in option two is more proportional to the PACP addition and the Pentagon building. Here, an eye level view of option two, looking at the PACP addition towards the Pentagon, about 15 feet in height of the existing MEF volume is visible above the PACP roofline. And another eye level view from the southwest, looking towards the Pentagon. A look at the interior entry experience in option two shows that it is not as grand as option one. We have here the same view looking toward the existing MEF once one enters the new PACP addition. The ceiling height in option two is lower at 14 feet and natural light is limited without the MEF extension. As discussed, there are pros and cons to both options presented. In summary, the sense of arrival and interior entrance experience created by option one is preferred. However, together, the scale and design of the MEF extension in this option overwhelms the Pentagon building facade. And option two, the top volume of the existing MEF is more proportional to the Pentagon building and to the new addition. But the entrance lacks prominence and the interior experience is less desirable due to lower ceiling height and limited natural light. And therefore, staff requests the applicant further explore how to improve natural light and openness at the interior entry of the PACP addition while either, while either reducing the scale of the MEF extension and/or simplifying its facade design. The next few slides demonstrate views of the two options side by side for comparison. And both options, you can see how the rectangular form of the PACP is divided into two distinct horizontal layers, a glass base and a decorative bulkhead, which sits atop the base. Staff finds that in both options, the nearly equal proportions of the decorative bulkhead and the glass base of the addition appear top-heavy and diminish the visibility of the PACP addition's lobby and entrances. For the next submission, staff recommends the applicant evaluate a design approach that unifies the entire primary facade into one composite composition that avoids the clear division of materials as currently proposed and distinguishes the south facade of the PACP addition as the main entrance. In addition, staff finds that while the overall architectural design of both options one and two is just, is differentiated from the historic Pentagon building, the proposed channel glass and metal mesh materials could appear dated. Channel glass and metal mesh are materials that are more commonly used on commercial-type buildings as opposed to institutional buildings of this stature. Therefore, staff recommends exploring additional building materials for the PACP addition and MEF facades that are differentiated but also compatible with the historic Pentagon building, such as stone, opaque glass, or copper. And this concludes my presentation. The, the executive director's recommendations are listed here, which have been incorporated into my presentation. Myself and several representatives from WHS and the applicant's design team are on the line to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Free. We appreciate that. That was very thorough. And do commissioners have any questions before, um, uh, we have a motion to approve comments? Any questions? Yes, I see Commissioner Brian Green.
Thank you. I had just two questions, just to help me identify a couple of things in the slides. First, with the wooden doors. Um, could you explain to me what those are? Are they historic wooden doors? Are they new wooden doors? Um, where, where do they come from?
Sure, those are existing. Um, I think the applicant would have more background on that, uh, topic. I, I'm not sure if they could, could join the conversation at this point, or if you would prefer to wait until the.
Well, that's fine. I was just curious. And I have a follow-up question. And I have a second question that's unrelated.
Sure, Brian. Um, Cameron, is there anybody on, online for WHS who wants to swing at that? Or you want me to answer that question?
Mr. McMahon, this is Hamad Ali from HDR. I'm the call. If you want, I can answer the question.
Yeah, Hamid, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Commissioner, those door are existing wooden door from the MEL, and those doors gonna be renovated as a part of the new project that's happening under Pentagon area. But as part of this project, those are gonna be open all the time and control, uh, control open all the time. So we are not gonna see those wooden door closed during the operation of the building.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I had, I had a little hard time hearing the very beginning of your answer. Um, but I caught the operational part at the end.
So the, the doors are existing wooden door from MEF uh, as part of another project. They're gonna be renovated. But for this project, they're gonna be on hold controlled for whole time, and they're just gonna be closed based on the operation of the building. So during the, during the operation hours, doors are gonna be open with the visual access back to the MEF.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brian, I think the answer to your question is, you know, those, those doors, those wooden doors, that, that style and the fact that they're wooden, I think, uh, are part of the existing exterior perimeter of the Pentagon. Um, as my understanding historically, since 1942, that's, those have been the types of doors used in those locations. And in fact, the ones you see there today were replaced in kind back about night, 2012, I think, uh, the same style. So they'll remain there. Um, as Hamad said, they will remain open during operations after the PACP is completed.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, and thank, and Ms. Free, I had a question. Have we, I had a question. I'm not sure if we need the slide up or not. I was just trying to understand in the interior lobby, there's a substantial bulkhead that drops. And I was interested in what the operational purpose of that bulkhead, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding our orientation in the lobby.
Sure, yes, I, I know exactly what you're referring to. Um, I, I did follow up with the applicant on that question and that, that space is going to be used for mechanical equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Are there any other questions from the commission? Hearing no questions, is there a motion to approve comments on the concept plan for the Pentagon Metro Entrance uh, pedestrian access control point?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hewlett has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Wright. Thank you. Now we'll open up for discussion, and if you can turn on your cameras and unmute, I'll start the deliberations with Commissioner McMahon.
Um, thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, thanks, everyone. Great presentation. Appreciate the, the staff's presentation and discussion. I have a couple of comments. And we'll have my staff, I guess, ready to answer any questions if I stumble. Um, very accurate presentation. Obviously, this is a, um, for us is one of the last pieces of the needed security perimeter for the Pentagon. I've been working at since nine 11. Um, and this takes care of a key entry area for us and expands on what we have there today. So it's important to move forward. Um, and, and get this thing executed, solving a, you know, a construction problems in a very challenging area, as you can imagine, being basically on top of a metro station. Um, my key comments, and we'll see what other questions we have going around. I think is from a personal review of it and where we are, um, is I think option one is where I, I Is I think option one is where I really think we, we need to head. I really had a problem with staff's use of the word overwhelming in presentation. I don't think it was in the slide deck. For the impression of option one on the building facade. And in fact, I think there's some improvements, I think, even on the outside with the, the architectural details for that addition on option one. I think secondly, I think there is some merit consideration of the trying to create a grand entrance into the Pentagon. You know, most people come into the building, most employees, all visitors will be coming through that space. And I think it's, it's a very good treatment that's been proposed by our architect for that area. And so I, I don't see that that is overwhelming. I've looked at both the, the presentation that went out. And I've looked at the, the attachments, the annex with the pictures from the various view sheds around the Pentagon site three ninety-five and. Overall, I know one ten and O's and nothing is zero, but I think it's the impact on that facade is fairly minimal. Obviously, some good comments will address about some of the other, other recommendations from staff, which I'm sure that. Our team will take on after this is approved as we move forward to preliminary and, and final. But I think that's. My key comment is I, I think option one is, is really preferable from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Thank you very much, Commissioner Stidham.
Sorry, I had trouble getting off of mute today. Thank you for, for the presentation. And I tend to agree that it, it does need a grand entrance for pedestrians. And I think that I agree with the staff's comments in terms of. Some hodgepodge of option one and two, so that you get the light that you need from that option one is providing. But that the prominence of it is, is to a lesser degree. So sort of marrying the, the pros of both of those options. Otherwise, I, I think it's in the right direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Well, yes, I've been, I've been hearing everything. I just haven't been able to participate. I'm still having issues. So. I don't have any confidence this time, but appreciate your call. But I'll catch up here in a minute or two. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewitt.
I, I too see the value in marrying different components of option one and option two. I like the extra lighting in option one. I like the higher ceilings in option one as well. So I do, and I didn't find that terribly overwhelming. You know, maybe because we're looking at it on a screen, but. But I don't know about the. Whether some of those materials will seem dated or not, because, you know, as a dated person myself, you know, sometimes it's hard to figure out what's dated. The other thing is, I know that you're aiming for, for. Lead silver right now, but aiming for lead silver. I mean, that. I think we need, we need a firm commitment for lead silver and should be aiming for lead gold as was indicated. So I thank Ms. Free for, and, and the team for their presentation and their efforts.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I, I, you know, I actually, I, looking at the massing, the more I think about it, I mean, I'm not sure that the massing. I think the massing in, in option one could be fine. I think one of the things that. Would improve the massing is if that second story projection received more glazing, especially on the sides. I think it would be a lot lighter and less and feel less heavy. My, my main design concern has to do with the, either the metal or the channel glass. There's, there are no major horizontal divisions in the design of the Pentagon. And it's really kind of introducing a slightly discordant note by dropping that. And I think the, the elevation would be greatly improved if it were simply fritted glass on two stories. And to really make it light and elegant, it seems like with adding additional glazing in that option one projection. Would, would really help to lighten up the appearance of that. And I think also doing that would help it unify in a design sense better with the two metro canopies on the end. And I think that whole assembly would start to read as one, as, as one consistent piece of design. It's a little bit. It, it feels like, you know, three different ideas sort of walking side by side at the moment. And I think that would simplify it. And I think the same thing you see in some of the examples, especially the U S Diplomacy Center, you know, kind of shows that. And I think if you really were, you know, and I think the way they use channel glass was very different in using it to frame a two-story opening to sort of draw attention to it. And I think it's ironic. One of the few things that makes channel glass look heavy is fritted glass. And so, but I, I would, I would encourage a, a simpler, a slight, you know, a revision that's simpler. More consistent glazing through it. And I think with that, and with additional glazing on the second story, I think the massing of option one. Would be, would be just fine. And it does have the added advantage of really creating an elegant entry sequence. And if there's a way to bring in additional skylights, really, you know, that could be a really beautiful, well-lit, elegant space. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Wright.
Great comments, Mr. Green. I, I agree with you in, in large part. First of all, anybody who is around twenty seventeen. My hats off to the W H S. God, this is so much better. But it was, that last one was a hot mess, as I recall. So, so, and, and it, it really did, it was a festival of ideas, none of which came together. This one, I think, I also disagree with the term overwhelming. The, the, if you look at the elevation of the Pentagon, it is really relentless. You'd have to, you'd have to pull, pull off a real hat trick to overwhelm the Pentagon. So, so I, I think the, the other thing that I don't agree with. Is that the idea of the mesh. It could, I, I think. I think, and, and I, I want to make sure that this is not received as a diss. The, the precedent slides you showed, most of them are by, are, are buyer blender bill. And I had the privilege of working on a couple of them with Hani Hassan. But I don't think you want to go and, and, and replicate his work all over Washington. Lest that it become formulaic. So, a, and I also think that, that while, while it's, it's a kind of a throwaway comment to say that the mesh would be dated. I, I would challenge you to think about incorporating a little bit of it for texture. And in the introduction of something a little bit shiny and new, transom panels, maybe. I don't know. We, we played with this a lot. And I was, it was my great sorrow that it was never built because the fish moved to Baltimore. But we designed and, and got the approval for a beautiful entrance to what was the National Aquarium. On the south end of the Commerce Department. And, and it was, it would have been something. So I disagree that it's, it's not, it doesn't have a place in, in, at the Pentagon. I, I think generally speaking, option one is, is better. I'm not sure that the taller ceilings. I, I, yeah, there is a little bit of a, of a, of a. Like mix and match proposition before you. And I, I would explore it. That the, the, that sort of interstitial space that you showed the slide of the very tall. Doorways. I, I'm not sure that the proportions are better there than, than the lower ceiling. But I'll leave that to you to figure out because you've got a long way to go in design development. But that's it. I think, I think Mr. Green made some good suggestions, too. I would play with some fritted glass and I would just don't throw out the mesh idea. I think it has a place here. To, to avoid a formulaic response. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Davis.
Uh, no comments from me. Thank you.
Okay, and I believe Commissioner Warren is still with us.
I am still with you. But I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Cozart.
I don't have any comments and thanks to staff for their presentation.
Thank you very much. I just want to make a few comments. This is just such an important project and it's, you know, seen and used by people from all over. It's a public threshold as well as a threshold for the many people who have dedicated their lives to serving our country in its defense. So I think as an iconic building in this country, but frankly internationally, it's an iconic building. Our, our discussions and all the work that's going into this is, is very important. So I think the applicants made a very good effort here. I, I happen to agree with those who are suggesting that we're not quite there yet because I prefer the first option. And only because those doors, I've passed through those incredible doors inside. And I do like the first option that gives it more prominence and sort of, it's more reverential. I hate, I don't hate, I hate to use the term, but the doors are fantastic in there. And I, I think more light would also be helpful in that first version. But I, I defer to those who make their living in there, have studied and have, you know, been planners and designers all their lives. But I just wanted to comment that I, I kind of like the, the first two comments by Commissioner McMahon and, and. Commissioner, okay, Stidham, thank you. I do think that those comments reflect my own feelings. And, and I, I think that we've got an excellent start here and these two options are wonderful. That will both respect the, the iconic architecture in this place. But also will provide for a much more comfortable entrance and, and a more suitable entrance, entrance. I see that Commissioner McMahon has his hand up.
Yes, Madam Chair, thanks. I have a couple more comments before we, we vote. But first, are we forgetting Chairman, excuse me, Commissioner Dixon? I haven't heard him yet.
I didn't hear that.
I do apologize. I did. Oh dear, Commissioner Dixon. I apologize. Are you here? Okay, very good.
I'm, I'm very much here.
Very much here. I see you.
And I just wanted to say I'm okay. I didn't mind being passed. I don't have anything to add to it. I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. A couple of comments here. First, we'll talk about lead first. And while I think the, what we came in here was we're gonna attempt to meet lead silver. And we certainly strive for lead gold. Obviously, our, our program and policy and D O D is to design to lead silver. For a couple of reasons, which I think the staffs can discuss afterwards as we continue on from concept to preliminary. Lead silver, I think, is achievable but will be difficult. Lead gold for some engineering and design issues is probably. Out of the realm, but certainly as a small, small structure, maybe okay, but certainly they will continue on to work on that. So I want to set the expectation that we are working for lead silver. Second, in light of the conversation we've had today, I'm, and before we vote, are we gonna make recommend some changes to the E D R? To be incorporated in the record, what goes forward, so that would be a clearer picture for both N C P C staff and the, and the W H S staff on what they're gonna be doing. I specifically talking to the, the comments about building massing and height, that talk about. The impression of option one and, and how it relates to option two.
I think I'll defer. Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna ask staff to respond to that, perhaps the executive director or Ms. Coster. But first, we have another hand up here from Commissioner Wright. Uh-oh.
He did.
Commissioner Wright, you've disappeared. Are you there?
Sorry, sorry. Oh. I would not handcuff the design team like that at this stage. I, I mean, because the, the two options are close enough in massing, let them figure it out. Because we've got, you know, you're, it's early, it's, you're early in the game. There's miles to go. And there's probably not language that we would all agree on in terms of what stays and what goes and the mix and match. You know, the animal that is of, of option one and option two. I, I think, I think you need to trust your design team and let them get the general gist of the comments along with those from C F A. And see what they come back with. That's, that's what I would suggest.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Are there any additional comments? Commissioner Dixon, I'm gonna give you another chance because I'm sorry that I missed you before.
You're so kind. I have nothing else to say. I'm okay.
Okay, very good. Right.
Here, very, uh, Chair, I'll just add, yes, that this, these are comments on concept. We're not putting one option, you know, over the other at this point. And we'll certainly listen back to the testimony here today as we look at, you know, the next submission for preliminary review. So hopefully that makes Commissioner McMahon feel a little bit better.
Okay, very good. Yes, I think the fact that we're approving these comments, we can understand that they're going to be reviewed by staff and incorporated. Into, into the next, into the next phase. So is, is, does that satisfy you, Commissioner McMahon?
Yeah, I think I'm okay with that. Now that we have it all on the record.
If I was playing cards, I call that table talk. So I appreciate it. You're emphasizing your comments. Appreciate that, Commissioner McMahon. And I, I think staff heard it. I hope so. And we can move on then unless there is any other comment you'd like to make.
I will say, as typically, Madam Chair, that both our staffs, and I've watched this over the last ten years, have worked very closely and worked cooperatively. So I have no concern about that part.
Great. Okay, super. Thanks for that endorsement. Hearing no further comments, and I don't see any hands up. Ms. Coster, could you please confirm the motion?
Certainly. There was a motion to approve comments on the concept plans for the Pentagon metro. Entrance pedestrian access control point by Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Wright seconded. With that, Commissioner Cozart.
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Great. Lovely to hear your voice. Thank you. Vice Chair Hewitt.
Yes.
Chair Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Warren.
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion has, oh, sorry. Whoops. That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Coster. Yes, the motion is passed. And so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is succeed. And a request for comments on the draft Joint Base Andrews Administrative and Support District Plan. And we have Mr. Wile making the presentation today. Mr. Wile.
Thank you very much. I will share my screen. Can you see and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The United States Air Force has submitted an area development plan for their administrative and support district. Which is located at Joint Base Andrews in Camp Springs, Maryland. The plan is in for draft review by the commission. The intent of the district plan is to build upon the vision and planning goals and objectives outlined in the two thousand and sixteen. Installation Development Framework Plan with both funded and unfunded projects over the next twenty to twenty-five years. As a draft review, we are considering and commenting on issues like transportation and linkages, planning objectives, sustainability strategies. Proposed development and the plan's consistency with our commission's comprehensive planning policies. For context, Joint Base Andrews encompasses over forty-four hundred acres in central Prince George's County, Maryland. And the installation is bordered by Allentown Road on the west, Pennsylvania Avenue on the east, and Sutland Parkway to the north. The base has a total assigned worker population of over twenty-one thousand personnel. With a residential population of approximately twenty-six hundred. And the installation hosts multiple commands from the Department of Defense and tenants that include the Maryland National Guard. Maryland State Police and District National Guard. Known as America's airfield, Joint Base Andrews serves as the secure aerial gateway for worldwide senior leadership movement and joint force mission execution. The Installation Development Plan, which N C P C reviewed previously back in two thousand and eighteen, separates the base into nine smaller planning districts. The Administrative and Support District is situated in the northwestern part of the installation, adjacent to the main gate. And the area functions as the base's primary commercial and administrative hub with a diverse mix of uses that include the Jones Head. with a diverse mix of uses that include the Jones Headquarters Building, dormitories, a dining hall, single-family detached housing, a fitness center, communications buildings, a security forces complex, and a commissary and base exchange. The plan identifies existing district assets or favorable features that benefits the area's character, which should be preserved, such as recreational areas, walking paths, newer development, and an interpretive garden. Existing planning liabilities or features that currently detract from the visual quality of the district include underutilized surface parking, dated buildings, and unscreened service areas. The district plan assesses the area's internal street network, looking at pavement conditions, street functions, and noting which streets currently have sidewalks and other pedestrian-oriented infrastructure. These graphics, which are included in the district plan, depict a variety of planning considerations, such as the presence of lower-lying floodplain areas, streams, forested areas that should be preserved, and a range of existing building conditions and their current usage. And these factors were used to identify future development potential throughout the district as shown here. Open spaces represented in green, easily redeveloped areas requiring minimal uh demolition are shaded in gray. Locations that would be costlier to redevelop are reflected in brown, and yellow areas represent development that can be repurposed through renovation. The district plan is founded on a vision to create walkable nodes with modern buildings connected by great streets. And you will see the this vision integrated throughout the plan from its future land use patterns, more pedestrian-friendly streetscapes, and building and landscape design guidelines. The plan builds upon the vision by identifying four sub-areas or nodes based on walking distances. And these areas would encompass compatible uses and possess their own distinct uh character. In the short-term five-year timeframe, there are sixteen total projects, some of which are funded and others that are unfunded. Notable projects include a new multi-level twenty thousand square foot uh space force facility and a main gate upgrade to comply with current Department of Defense uh security standards. The Air Force also proposes multiple new shuttle stops, EV charging stations, solar panel arrays, and e-bike and scooter stations to transform the base into a a more environmentally sustainable and energy uh in independent installation. And we note these short-term and sustainability-focused projects as part of the executive director's recommendation. Most of the plan's new development is unfunded with no prospective tenants, some of which includes notional capacity development. And if you recall, our commission has previously reviewed capacity development as part of other recent plans, such as the Fort Belvoir North Master Plan, which showed how the installation could accommodate new development should they receive new tenants. And this plan's capacity development is similar, demonstrating how the Air Force could accommodate future unforeseen development within the district. The plan shows three main focus areas for future development, one in the downtown node, one in the south end node, and a campus area adjacent to the Jones Headquarters Building. The future downtown node would consist of multiple new higher-density buildings that are aligned along a grid pattern of streets. And the Air Force would construct these new buildings over existing surface parking to reduce capacity and to transform the area into a more walkable place. The south end node would encompass a new commissary, base exchange, uh multi-level note, multi-level residential buildings, and new surface parking lots. And the plan highlights a new open campus area adjacent to the Jones Building, which would be defined by a series of new multi-level office buildings and new to uh two new parking garages. We express our support for this future cluster development as part of our executive director's uh recommendations comments. However, we recommend the Air Force continue to evaluate the design of the Jones Campus to assess its need uh for the future garages and their location as it would be preferable to cite new buildings and people adjacent to the future campus instead. The Air Force should also evaluate the layout of the future new commissary, base exchange, and housing to see if those pieces can uh be better integrated into a more walkable town center-like development. And we express these points as part of our executive director's comments. Based on the Department of Defense's Unified Facilities Planning Criteria, the district plan includes a regulating plan that sets out development parameters for each of the sites with building height ranges, maximum build-to-lines, and parcel access locations. A key part of the district vision is to establish a network of complete streets or streets that are designed to facilitate all modes of travel, walking, biking, and transit, and characterized by robust landscaping and strategic placemaking and people-scale amenities. The plan calls for new shuttle stops, e-bike and scooter stations, food truck hookups, and a new autonomous uh shuttle service with the intent of providing alternatives to driving while on base. The plan would redevelop multiple surface lots and consolidate parking into garages. And the plan shows a slight decrease in parking over time. However, additional information is still needed to understand whether the district and larger installation would meet NCPC's applicable one-to-two parking ratio goal. And we include these points as part of the executive director's recommendation as well as the Air Force's intent to develop a new transportation management plan over the next year. And we note the plan should reflect your transportation element policies uh and be designed to attain a one-to-two parking ratio goal. The district plan references the installation's new building and landscape design guidelines, which are detailed in a separate document known as the Installation Facility Standards. And these were recently finalized in 2022 as an update to the base's previous Architecture Compatibility Plan. We note these new standards in the executive director's recommendation as well as their intent, which is to ensure high-quality, sustainable development and to encourage the use of native, naturally occurring indigenous plants that are appropriate for our local climate and environment. And finally, uh the Prince George's County Planning Department has provided several comments related to future coordination, signage, landscaping, and streetscape design standards. And we are requesting responses to each of their comments from the applicant as part of their final plan submission to NCPC. We also note the Air Force will develop area development plans for each of their other planning districts over the next few years. And we note our commission's review authority over those plans as part of our comments as well. So with that, here's the executive director's recommendation. However, I will not go through each point as I have already summarized the summarized these comments as part of my presentation. Uh but before I conclude, I would like to note that we have two representatives here from Joint Base Andrews, David Jordan and Ahmed Abdullah, who are community planners at Joint Base Andrews. And they are here on behalf of the plan and are available for questions by the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wile. We appreciate that very good presentation. And thank you for noting that there are consultants here. Uh do any um would you commissioners have any questions? No com- commissioners have questions, hearing none, then is there a motion to approve that? I'm sorry.
I I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Oh, okay. I I couldn't hear you. You were breaking up. And yes, if you'd like to make a motion.
That wasn't me. I was.
That's okay.
Okay, so I I do um move approval of the um recommendation uh uh and the uh comments on the uh um draft master plan. And I'm very thankful for it because um Joint Base Andrews could use a a lot of work right now. And I'm really happy to see this. I only wish the the funding that we hope to get in the future were was available right now. I also support the planning department's comments. Particularly with on on everything, but especially signage, because sometimes you get in there and you're really trying to figure out what's what and where to go. So um
Thank you.
Uh yeah, so I really appreciate that. And um to make it more walkable, those buildings would be fabulous. I I am really excited about this. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett, for that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second, uh Commissioner Dixon? We have a second commissioner. Um and yes, now we begin comments. I'm gonna begin with you, Commissioner Dixon, please.
I just hope they don't forget uh the improvement or rather of the golf course that they have there that they have altered a bit. Uh so I hope it comes back to where it was. And I think we lost one, but uh at any rate, don't forget the golf courses.
Very good. Thank you for your comment. It's been moved and seconded. Are there other comments from commissioners? I I recognize Commissioner Dixon, uh Commissioner Hewlett. Did you have any additional um comments or Vice Chair Hewlett?
Um not really. And I could comment on all of this, but I'm I've said what I needed to say right now. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you. I appreciate the staff presentation and the work that went into developing this plan. And uh you know, with the comments provided, I look forward to um hearing any other comments, but I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Um I don't either. We've seen um pieces and parts of this plan for years, and I've commented plenty. So I'll.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. No comments from me.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren?
Uh no comments here either. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Commissioner McMahon?
Um thanks ma'am, Chair. Thanks to uh the Air Force staff for uh, you know, a great development of a, you know, start on their uh ADP for these areas. I that looks very good on what they're doing. Thanks to the uh the commission staff for their report on that. Um I have no significant comments. I I will say it's although as talked about, they're currently unprogrammed. I'm sure uh Air Force will take back the comments about the siding and placement of those parking garages uh that at some point maybe maybe built uh it's uh I I think that's not standard practice how they're sided. So hopefully that we'll get a look at. Not sure it needs to be done as part of the ADP, but certainly as I get, you know, ten years from now, maybe into development. Uh and then just from a personal note here, um speaking for bicyclists worldwide, I would just note in the there the in their uh um cutaways, they showed a bicycle lane in between a travel lane and a parking lane for for vehicles. And uh I just personally don't like that. I don't like it dored. So um if they can think about that, that'd be great, but it's not a showstopper. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham?
Uh thank you very much for the staff's work on the presentation. Uh greatly appreciated. Um I have no further comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
I don't know whether you can see me, but check. At least you can hear me.
I guess.
Um I appreciate the um, I think the terms, the 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 town center um um concept and and the walkability that's promoted in this plan. And um would encourage that, yeah, the continued look at way at at how the at wayfinding. That's gonna be very important in a plan like this. Um other than that, just uh those few brief comments and and appreciate the work that's been done on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stidham and Commissioner Argo.
That was me. That was Argo.
Oh, I am sorry. I apologize. Okay. We have, we're about halfway through the meeting. It's gonna be a long one today. Thank you for your patience. And I just want to say that the plan appears to be very well thought out and it's example of of how to um position future development in a sustainable fashion for military installation. And I look forward to reviewing um the next iterations and and including the future transportation management plan um when those become available. So uh are there any further comments? I hope I didn't leave anyone out.
I would just like to say thank you again to to um our team, Mr. Wile and the team for doing such a great job and the team from Andrews as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, um Ms. Coster, could you please confirm the motion and um the second and take the vote?
So uh the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewlett and seconded by Commissioner Dixon. And with that, Commissioner Kozar?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Warren?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion has carried. Thank you, Ms. Coster. The next agenda item is a request to approve comments on concept plans for the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency Building and Site Development at Saint Elizabeth's Campus. Um we're going to hear a presentation by Ms. Shipman, and we can see your um presentation.
Right.
Okay, and we can hear you. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Goodman and or I'm sorry, good afternoon, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. Uh the U.S. General Services Administration has submitted concept plans for the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency Building and Site Development at the Saint Elizabeth West Campus Department of Homeland Security Headquarters. As a reminder, the Saint Elizabeth West Campus is a one hundred and seventy-six acre site located in southeast Washington, DC. The entire Saint Elizabeth Hospital Campus is listed as a national historic landmark. This is an aerial view, the west campus. North is to the left. The project is sited at the south end of the campus on what is known as the plateau. As noted in a 2020 memorandum of agreement, the construction of this development will require demolition of historic and contributing buildings on the plateau site. For those who have not yet visited the campus, following are a few photos to give you a sense of the existing conditions, including historic and recently constructed buildings. On the top left is the historic center building that has been fully rehabilitated and serves as the offices for the Secretary of DHS. And on the top right is the historic administration row that frames the south lawn. Buildings sixty-eight and sixty-nine below are two of the historic buildings planned for dip demolition on the plateau. These are additional views that give a sense of the campus landscape and site characteristics. Also as context, other new construction projects on the campus include the Coast Guard Headquarters completed in 2013, the Center Building West Edition completed in 2019, and the Adjacent Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, or CISA, building, which is in progress. The proposed ICE Headquarters Project, shown as B2 and circled in red on this slide, was included in the master plan amendment for the Saint Elizabeth West Campus, which was approved by NCPC in 2020. The master plan goals aim to balance the need to maintain the historic character of the site while achieving the maximum feasible build-out for federal use and a secure campus. The proposed ICE Headquarters gross building area and maximum height are consistent with the approved master plan. However, as shown on the right, the concept design has been modified to increase the setback from historic buildings, create a stronger axial connection to the historic Hitchcock Hall, and enhance building performance through solar orientation. This is the proposed site plan showing the courtyard building and surrounding landscape design. The project proposes a network of additional pedestrian paths. And while most occupants of the building will arrive as pedestrians, vehicular access is provided for dignitary vehicle drop-off at the front of the building and service access at the rear loading dock. GSA reconvened federal agencies and consulting parties for Section 106 consultation in October 2023 to discuss the proposed ICE Building Design Development and recommendations to minimize impacts to the historic campus. The consulting party's process is ongoing, but this slide shows the progress progression of the building design over the four meetings thus far as the design team begins to break down the scale of the upper bars and articulate the facades to improve the relationship to adjacent historic buildings. This is an axonometric view over the south lawn, looking towards the current proposed building concept with the admin row historic buildings to the left and CISA building to the right. Staff supports the responsiveness of the design team to feedback throughout the consulting party's process and recommends the applicant continue to develop the architecture enassing to increase compatibility with the historic campus, particularly the facades confronting the adjacent admin row buildings and south lawn. The proposed building height increases from north to south. The proposed building height increases from north to south with the top of the five-floor north tower bar at the same elevation as the adjacent CISA building and the height of the south bar at one floor above. The design sets back the building a hundred and fifty feet from the historic admin row building seventy-two. And this diagram helps to illustrate the scale relationship between the proposed building and the historic admin row buildings. The terracotta panel facade color for the proposed building is a shade between the darker admin row brick color and the CISA facade. And the patterning of the admin row buildings coining also serves as inspiration for the proposed facade. The material palette includes terracotta, as I mentioned previously, precast concrete, glass curtain walls, and metal panels and vertical fins. Here are views of each of the building elevations. The project's landscape design goals include drawing upon the character and language of the campus landscape, connecting to the south woodland, and increasing biodiversity habitat shade and seasonal interest. The proposed planting zones primarily consists of woodland plantings with a lawn area at the building entry and green roofs on the building podium. These are views of the proposed courtyard design and a section and views of the proposed south woodland along the north side of the building. As the design is developed, staff recommends the landscape and any vegetated stormwater management areas closest to the admin row be carefully aligned with the historic features documented in the cultural landscape report. The applicant noted that the plant palette will follow NCPC's Pollinator Best Practices Resource Guide recommendations with regard to encouraging and supporting pollinators in wooded and stormwater management areas. And in response to public comment, the applicant provided a revised conceptual plant palette, removing non-native species and including additional pollinator-supporting plantings such as milkweeds. The exact species are yet to be developed at later phases of the project. This is a view of the west campus from the Potomac River. The proposed ICE headquarters, the proposed ICE Headquarters Building is on the right. To inform further evaluation of the impacts of the project on the surrounding historic and neighborhood views and vistas, staff recommends the applicant provide additional views of the proposed development from the surrounding area, including a wider regional view than shown on this slide towards the west campus, showing the relationship of the proposal to the topographic bowl. And a neighborhood view from Fifth Street Southeast, looking towards the proposed building's south facade, similar to this provided view from MLK Avenue shown on the slide. The proposal indicates the landscape design creates a friendly planted edge to the south for the adjacent neighbors and the requested view should assist with evaluating the transition from new campus development to the surrounding community. It is also important to note that, as was mentioned with the garage project last month, the project team is continuing the community outreach and engagement efforts begun with previous campus master plans to address any concerns and questions. Engagement for the ICE Development Project is managed through the Saint Elizabeth West Campus Opportunity Center, GSA's Outreach and Engagement Arm, and includes regularly scheduled meetings and activities, representation at local community meetings, and information about employment and business opportunities. With that, staff recommends the commission approve the comments on the concept plans for the Saint Elizabeth West Campus ICE Building and site development highlighted throughout the presentation and listed here. Staff recommends the commission comment favorably on the overall design approach. And requests the applicant provide further information with the next submission related to the status of historic preservation and environmental mitigation measures, as well as consistency with NCPC tree replacement policies. That concludes my presentation, members of the applicant team from the General Services Administration, ZGF and Olin are also available to answer any questions from the commission, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shipman, we appreciate that good, very fine presentation and appreciate your informing us of the consultants who are present. Do any commissioners have questions before we move to entertaining a motion? Any questions about the presentation? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the comments on concept plans for Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency Building and the site development at Saint Elizabeth's Campus?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright and Vice Chair Hewlett. Uh, now we're open for commission discussion, just make sure your cameras and your, your microphones are on and we'll begin. Uh, we're beginning with Commissioner Wright this time.
I could, I thought you might do that, this time I was ready. Um, this is gonna probably be, not probably, this will be the last building that we, I, we're seeking concept approval from the commissions in my tenure and I would, and, and I, as far as I'm concerned, I'm going out with a bang. Um, this has been a really tough project because, you know, we, we set some precedence with the CISA building. It is a five hundred and fifty thousand square foot building that we're trying to what's the word I'm looking for, we, we don't want it to go away, but we want it to make itself small because it faces the admin row buildings, which are arguably, I think the Kirkbride Center Building is probably the nearest and dearest to architectural historians. But in pop culture, the admin row is the, the, those are the most famous buildings from, you know, the Tom Cruise movie. Anyway, um, I think the, the design team in both architecturally and from a landscape architecture perspective has done a really good job. Making the, a, a pretty large building seem as small and diminutive as it can and respect its neighbors, this is a very difficult campus to work on. So, and there are miles to go, remember this is just concept, but I don't mind this being my last project. And with that, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Dixon.
Uh, I have nothing to say except hearing me, me and his comments will make me sad. But that's where it goes.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. And Commissioner Davis.
Uh, no comments from me, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren.
Sorry, uh, no, no comments here either, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Kozar.
Um, I don't have any comments, appreciate the staff for their work and the uh, GSA team and others for their work.
Excellent, thank you, Commissioner McMahon.
Uh, no, it's strange that we're having such a short review of a project up there at Saint Elizabeth after the, the ones I've attended in the past that Commissioner Wright has talked a little bit about, but it's great to see that progress, I have no comments.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon, Commissioner Stidham.
Um, I agree that this has been a big project for GSA and for Mina, and I our service had great concerns when, with this particular building when uh, we first started talking about it, but I have to say that the design uh, complements the rest of the landscape, I, I think it's done a, a good job, we had concerns about the removal of the previous building, um, which, um, you know, was a lot of the one oh six conversation, but I think what is proposed uh, is, is along the right lines and will go nicely onto the campus, so a great job there.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Stidham, Commissioner Argo.
Um, I would echo a lot of the previous comments, I think the, the, the note about this being a complimentary, this has evolved into a very complimentary uh, design as well, which I think is, you know, appreciated by all of us. Um, look forward to the, you know, to the continued development, it's it's an interesting and kind of exciting one, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, Commissioner Argo, Vice Chair Hewlett.
Um, yes, I'd like to thank Ms. Shipman and others in GSA, um, and I would just echo the comments of others. Uh, no additional comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett, and Commissioner Green.
Thank you very much, um, yeah, I appreciate the, the, the contextual efforts on the design and I just but one suggestion is most of the views emphasize the connection from an aerial perspective and the connection between the terracotta colors and the brick. I would recommend looking a little perhaps more strongly at the pedestrian experience and, and how that connects across, and I think some of that, my concerns are the cladding and the, the, the color and the texture of the stone cladding at the ground level, which is, is very light, white and very different from other materials that one would experience as a pedestrian moving through the, the campus. And, um, I would just suggest kind of looking at that and how the, how the users would experience those colors and what might help to, to draw that building into better, a better context at the, at the, at the ground floor, at the, at the pedestrian walking experience, thank you.
Great, very interesting, thank you for that, Commissioner Green, and I then will just say that along with the garage project that came to us last month, this project is an important, um, next step in realizing that the, the master plant that will accommodate the space needs of the Department of Homeland Security. Um, the work to date appears to have been very thoughtfully can, uh, consider, very thoughtfully, it, it considers its surroundings, both as historic site, but also as a tremendous natural setting, and so I look forward to future, to future developments in this project and I look forward to ensuring that this development is, is very compatible with both, with all of the factors in its, its setting, both natural and historic. And I do want to thank the staff for this, was there another comment, I thought I heard someone try to say something, no? Okay, well, if there are no further comments or questions, Ms. Koster, could you confirm the motion in a second and call for the vote, please?
Certainly, uh, the motion to approve comments on concept plans was by Commissioner Wright with the second by Vice Chair Hewlett, and with that, Commissioner Kozar?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Great, Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Warren?
Abstain.
Thank you, that motion has carried. Um, Agenda Item sixty is a request to approve preliminary site and building plans for Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall Personnel Barracks in Fort Meyer, Virginia. Um, the presentation will be made by Ms. Hare and we can see your presentation, do you want to say something, Ms. Hare, and we can?
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
There, we can hear you, yes, thank you very much, and please proceed.
Wonderful, thank you. Good afternoon Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The US Army Corps of Engineers, on behalf of the US Army, has submitted plans for the unaccompanied enlisted personnel housing barracks project at Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall for commission comment. Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall is located in Fort Meyer, Virginia. The site is located in the center of Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall on Sheridan Avenue, as noted here. The commission's preliminary review of projects focuses on whether the applicant addressed the comments and recommendations made during concept review and topics such as architecture, landscape design, sustainability, programming and consistency with the comprehensive plan. In the following slides, I'll provide an overview of the site history, existing conditions, and the proposed project. Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall includes two locations. Meyer Henderson Hall is located in Fort Meyer, Virginia, and Fort McNair in southwest Washington DC. Meyer Henderson Hall is located immediately west of Arlington National Cemetery and the Pentagon. Fort McNair is located at the confluence of the Washington Channel and the Anacostia River across from Joint Base Anacostia Bowling. The commission reviewed the Army's draft master plan for the joint base at the February twenty twenty-three commission meeting. The draft master plan included an addendum for the proposed unaccompanied enlisted personnel housing barracks project, and it was then reviewed separately by the commission in April of twenty twenty-three. Meyer Henderson Hall is two hundred and seventy acre base that is home to several Army and US Marine units, including the headquarters for the Joint Base, Command Battalion and US Marine Corps, as well as the US Army Band, the Old Guard, the Raider US Army Clinic and A Company, or the Commander in Chief's Guard. The northern portion of the base is primarily Army-focused missions and the southern portion is Marine Corps missions. The proposed project is in the center of the base along Sheridan Avenue. The applicant is also proposing a site for habitat restoration as part of the tree replacement requirements northeast of the project site. The project site is approximately eight acres with existing buildings, pavement and trees along Sheridan Avenue, there are several, there are seven two-story residences, behind the residences to the east, there is an access road with resident parking, two garages and two storage sheds. Further east is the, is a pool complex that is no longer in use, which includes in-ground pools and several pool support facilities. North of the pool complex is a lawn area currently being used as renovation swing space for building four one six. This is a reminder that the project will require the demolition of several existing buildings on the site. The project will comply with the program comment for the Department of the Army Interwar Era Historic Housing Associated Buildings and Structures and Landscape Features from nineteen nineteen to nineteen forty, as enacted by the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation on September fourth, twenty twenty. The program comment sets forth the way in which the Army complies with Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act for its inventory of interwar era historic housing, including maintenance, repair, renovation, abatement, mothballing, demolition and new construction. The structures to be removed include the seven duplexes, garages, storage sheds and pool facilities. In the original concept plan reviewed by the commission in April, the two barracks buildings were sited to align with the front facades of existing barracks buildings along Sheridan Avenue. On the east side, the new buildings, the east side of the new buildings, the pedestrian corridor that originates at Summerall Field to the north and runs along the east side of the barracks will be continued south to terminate at Summer, Schoolhouse Road. The original submission proposed a sixty-two space parking lot between the new barracks buildings and Schoolhouse Road. The commission recommended reducing the size of the parking, pushing it back from Sheridan and adding landscaping. Additionally, the commission had significant concerns about the building's scale and architecture. The new barracks buildings are still proposed to align with the front facades of existing barracks buildings four one nine and four two one along Sheridan Avenue. However, the buildings have been relocated approximately twenty feet and ten feet to the south to retain additional heritage trees along Sheridan Avenue. The parking has been reduced from sixty-two spaces to twenty-one and moved further back from Sheridan Avenue to preserve the landscape view shed. The twenty-one spaces include two accessible spaces and four motorcycle spaces. Schoolhouse Road will not be realigned, but will be resurfaced in its present position to allow preservation of the existing heritage tree at the corner of Schoolhouse and Sheridan. The dashed red line on this plan illustrates the clear zone required by the Department of Defense Unified Facilities Criteria. This area may have trees and turf, but needs to be free of shrubs. Based on the comments received by the commission, the applicant evaluated the existing buildings for design inspiration. The site is located at the center of the campus just south of the Fort Meyer National Historic Landmark District. Sheridan Avenue's character is largely, largely established by mature lines of trees and historic barracks with a clear pedestrian identity. The images of the historic structures provide precedent for scale, proportion, materials and detail, all of which have influenced the revised design. The applicant revised the submission, including reducing the height and scale significantly from the original. In addition, the materials, proportions, massing and details have been adjusted to relate better to the pedestrian scale of Sheridan Avenue. This is a comparison of the concept submission and the updated preliminary submission. As you can see here, the applicant reduced the overall height from the concept plan by fourteen feet to match the scale of existing historic buildings. The applicant also re-proportioned windows, added brick arches, modified the dormer color and scale, reduced gable sizes, re-proportioned the porches and changed the materials. As you can see in this side-by-side comparison, the design is much improved with a better scale, finistration and overall design. As such, staff recommends the commission commends the applicant for revising the design to respect the historic integrity of the site. Specifically, the applicant has updated the overall scale, materials, finistration and design of the architecture to be more compatible with the Fort Meyer National Historic District. Significantly reduced the size of the proposed parking lot and pulled it back from the sidewalk. Significantly reduced the size of the proposed parking lot and pulled it back from the sidewalk. Ensured that the security standoff requirements are met without sacrificing design quality. Preserved existing street trees, but providing a greater setback and added landscaping to create a campus environment that blends with the existing context. Here is an additional comparison view of the west side. You can see the improvements of the scale, front entry, and materials. The configuration of the east side of the buildings has changed significantly since the concept plan. The porches have moved to the courtyards, and the shape of the buildings has improved as well. The design changes seen here on the east side are intended to activate the building courtyards to encourage residents to engage and spend time outside. The revised design maximizes the preservation of street trees along Sheridan Avenue to maintain existing character of the street frontage. Only a single existing basswood identified to be in very poor condition is proposed to be removed along the street frontage as part of this development. However, a total of eighty-eight trees will be removed within the limits of disturbance, including thirteen specimen trees, which are trees having a diameter or breast height of twenty-four inches or greater. To mitigate this, over ninety large canopy trees are proposed in and around the barracks landscape. The applicant has indicated that NCPC's Tree Preservation and Replacement Guide will be utilized to calculate the total tree replacement required. Given the constraints of the project site, an existing lawn hillside with scattered trees approximately one-third of a mile northeast of the barracks site along McNair Road is available for habitat restoration. It is estimated that approximately two acres of the four-acre area will be needed to satisfy the tree replacement requirements. The habitat restoration area will be forested with a minimum of five tree species, including major and minor deciduous trees and two shrub species, including flowering shrubs, flowering shrubs to provide for native pollinators. Low maintenance hardy plantings will be selected to ensure the longevity of the habitat restoration area with minimal human intervention. A ten-foot-wide porous asphalt pedestrian trail connecting to the existing trail along the west side of McNair Road may be incorporated within the habitat restoration area. The main landscape feature of the site will be the continuation of the pedestrian walk that runs north to south from its terminus at Somerall Field north of the project through the site to the realigned Schoolhouse Road. Each barracks will have a unique terrace courtyard that accentuates the attached indoor community recreation rooms and encourages taking activities outdoors. Walkways around the site perimeter and multiple connections contribute to a walkable urban environment. Anti-terrorism and forced protection design regulations require a landscape devoid of potential conflicts within thirty-three feet of the barracks buildings. The applicant is proposing a plan with multi-seasonal interest in the planting selections that also complies with this requirement. Stormwater management regulations require the use of best management practices, including rain gardens that will parallel the main pedestrian walk behind the barracks and will be planted with native trees, flowering shrubs, grasses, and plants that are capable of withstanding the challenges and variability of climate change. The Commission has received public comment indicating concern about the lack of native pollinator species and the use of non-native species in the planting palette. The applicant has responded that some of the suggested changes could be appropriate for the design or the off-site habitat restoration area, including the use of milkweed, button bush, and black cherry. The applicant has also indicated, however, that some of the suggestions are not appropriate for the design landscape or location. Staff notes that as this is preliminary review, the design and palette will be further refined prior to the next submission. Staff is confident the applicant can revise the landscape plans appropriately and comply with the intent of the Pollinator Guide and the Tree Preservation and Replacement Policy as part of the final review by the Commission. The design team evaluated multiple brick samples from different manufacturers to find one compatible with the existing historic buildings. The historic buildings also typically have a base, a dark granite, and a water table that's typically are of a lighter limestone or warm sandstone. The applicant is proposing cast stone for the base and water table. The upper roof areas are proposed to be faux slate. The porch roofs are proposed to be standing seam copper or standing seam metal painted to simulate the brown patina that copper develops over time. The path from Somerall Field is concrete pavers with concrete edge banding. The paving for the continuation from the circle to Schoolhouse Road will be the same material and color. The applicant has worked closely with staff and diligently addressed staff and Commission comments on the project that have resulted in a positive design outcome. As such, staff recommends the Commission approves the preliminary site and building plans for the proposed unaccompanied enlisted personnel housing barracks at Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall in Fort Meyer, Virginia. This concludes my presentation. I have included recommendations here for your reference. Lieutenant Colonel Dexter, Deputy Joint Base Commander, is here to give a few remarks, and the design team is also here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hare. That was just really remarkable. Thank you. That was a great presentation. And are we going to hear from Lieutenant Colonel Dexter now, or um? Colonel Dexter, would you like to make some remarks, or would you like us to proceed?
Uh, ma'am, if I could, uh, just uh, very quickly, uh, first of all, Commissioners, good afternoon. Lieutenant Colonel John Dexter, the Deputy Joint Base Commander here. So first of all, I would like to thank you for your uh, your time for hearing this brief and whatever comments you can provide as we try to balance the, you know, maintain the historic nature of this installation with the emission requirements for what we do here in the National Capitol Region. Uh, but the conflict, we've we've made good progress since we met last year in April and uh, continue to uh, work with the the respective teams to get this project across the line. Uh, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you so much, Lieutenant Colonel Dexter. And now, do any of the Commissioners have questions for Lieutenant Colonel Dexter or for Ms. Hare? Any questions for them at this time?
I do. Um, yes, I just, I'm curious because I've never even run across it. What is faux slate made of? That's a new one for me.
Made of something faux.
I mean, I'm assuming it's some kind of composite, but but I just, I'm I'm just checking.
Ms. Hare, Ms. Hare, do you have an answer for us?
I actually will defer to the design team on that one.
Hello, um, my name is Kevin Hubbard. I'm the project manager for the design team. Um, I would like to call on Mary Kay Lenzlata to respond to that.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you very much for your, Ms. Hare, for your thoughtful presentation, and we look forward to your comments. I'm Mary Kay Lenzlata with Hartman Cox Architects, uh, for the record. Um, faux slate, faux being false. Uh, it is a composite, Commissioner. Um, it is sometimes composed of post-consumer rubbers. And sometimes is a composite with plastics as well.
That's what I figured. I just, it, that, it, that's a first for me. Never heard of it. Um, and I, and I'm assuming that it's a big cost saver. Um, uh, have you, have you used it before? And how did, I mean, I'm assuming that it's rather ageless then, if it's a composite.
Um, I will say it it uh, it is not like any material, not totally ageless. Um, but we have used it before successfully in Washington, D.C. and in other locations. It does have a lifespan, but so does slate. Um, and in keeping with the Army requirements, um, we are charged with where appropriate to use um, uh, man-made materials, and this is one where I think uh, you can't really touch it. I think it's more important to use real materials where we can touch and see them up close and personal. And so we think uh, the, while we would love to have slate, we think this is a good compromise that is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Army.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And team, um, are there any other questions from Commissioners? Hearing no further questions from the Commissioners, we do have a person signed up to provide testimony. Mr. Byrne, welcome back. You have three minutes to provide testimony, and please let us know when you're ready.
Uh, thank you. Um, as in previously, uh, my testimony on this project relates to landscaping. Several entries and emissions in the project's landscaping plantings are not consistent with NCP's but new best practice research guide. The NCPC guide highlights a need to plant common milkweed, Isclepius serrica, to support monarch butterfly populations. However, as in the previous project, the landscaping of this project does not contain any common milkweed. Please therefore advise the pla- uh, or ask the applicant to plant common milkweed within the park's sunny areas. The landscape contains swamp milkweed. However, a swamp milkweed is not a good vegetation competitor and tends to disappear as vegetation density increases and habitats dry out. Most plants will live only for only two to five years in gardens. Swamp milkweed therefore cannot replace common milkweed in this project, although it is a desirable plant, but just may not last. The the landscape contains a tree, Jinko loba, and a shrub, Cherry laurel, uh, cherry laurel, that are not native to the United States. Everyone knows Jinko isn't. Uh, in contrast, the NCPC guide recommends the landscape contain a hundred percent um, native species as when referencing the U.S. Department of Agriculture's publication. Native species provide pollen and nectar rich for native pollinators and insects and global food plants for butterflies and moths. Non-native species may not do this. More importantly, perhaps, non-native species can become invasive as time passes. Please therefore ask the applicant to replace the Jinko and the Cherry Laurel with native trees and shrubs that support many pollinators. As as has been noted, um, the the applicant can replace these with black cherry and button bush, which are among the best trees and shrubs of pollinators. The landscape contains two pollinators, uh, two cultivars. However, the NCPC guide says, take, uh, take care when selecting plant cultivators. Some are selective traits, uh, attracted to humans, but not the pollinators, et cetera. Further, the leaves and stems of some cultivators are toxic to insects. Please ask the applicant to remove these cultivars from landscaping. Now, these are simple requests, and this, that we don't have something like a Texas Memorial, which has a particular reason for something. Uh, so please, let's see if we can get the common milkweed here. And uh, and the swamp milkweed is good, but it's probably just not going to last. I've seen this appear several times where planted in my, in our county's parks. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Byrne, again, for your testimony. And um, uh, uh, does anyone have any question for Mr. Byrne? Any questions for Mr. Byrne? Mr. Byrne, I'm just going to ask a question. It doesn't have to be answered today, but I believe Ginkgo Bilbo was first introduced in the United States in the nineteen fifties or sixties. When do we ever consider them? Obviously, they're not indigenous, but they they are used, and they're a hardy tree in planting. But um, don't answer now, but I'm just just curious. It's just a thought I'm going to throw out there. But is there, y- y- thank you again for your testimony. Is there a motion to?
I just have a, I have a comment on that. Jinko, I thought was much earlier than the fifties and sixties. I seem to remember where I was growing up as a child. Uh, but anyway, regardless of it, uh, one of the reasons Jinko is not that invasive is because they only plant um, male trees. As you may know, female trees, but who's a fruit that stinks. That may be the reason it hasn't become invasive. Uh, the fact is, there's no particular reason to plant it, because you can, you can plant native trees instead that have pollinators, you know, plenty of them. So really, there's no good reason. Uh, it may not become invasive, but because, simply because you don't plant the female trees. But uh, nevertheless, uh, it just doesn't help the pollinators like the others.
Thank you.
Cherry Laurel, there's no reason for that to be there.
Thank you very much. So, thank you for your testimony and moving, oh, did someone have something else to?
I thought I was ready to make a motion. I thought that's what you asked.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I was going to ask for the motion.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, I move approval of the preliminary site and building plans.
Thank you very much. It's been moved. Is there a second that we approve the preliminary site and building plans for Joint Base Myers Henderson Hall Personnel Barracks? Seconded by Commissioner Stidham. Um, so uh, now we are going to open up um, the um, Commission for Discussion. And we'll start with Commissioner Green. Would you like to begin, Commissioner Green, please?
Ah, thank you very much. Um, no, and it is is one of the, is one of the uh, Commissioners who was quite critical of the previous design. I just really want to compliment the design team on its traveled many happy miles from um, from its origins. And um, it's really terrific, and I really appreciate the design. I mean, it's 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 very good contextual design. It works on the site. It works. It works as a building. Um, yeah, it's just, I really appreciate um, um, both the sponsor and the architect for um, for taking it from where it started to where it is now. And I I just took the smallest of things, just because I I was embarrassed to bring it up, but not embarrassed enough to not bring it up. Um, was just, uh, you know, my only minor, I love the way on the front elevation, and it was one of the suggestions to use paired windows instead of just the, you know, the marsh of singles across the block. Um, and it really, that that has really improved the rhythm across the the facade. And uh, my only uh, suggestion might be at that very center bay is if you added a a third window to triple it over the center door. It would really bring subtle attention to that center doorway. Um, and just let it pop, and I I hope there's not a partition in the way. Um, but, but this is really one, I just really want to compliment, you know, compliment everyone involved on um, you know, taking those compliment, taking the, taking the comments and suggestions that we made and really, you know, um, turning into something very, very good. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Wright?
Um, gosh, DOD is killing it today, and I've had a long history of beating up on Commissioner McMahon, so please pay attention. Um, uh, this is also really, uh, I I don't want to comment either because it's so much better. Um, but I would like to say one thing. Um, it it speaks to the value of going outside of our organizations and hiring talent from outside. Um, lots of times, even, not on projects like this, but on small projects, one of the founding principles of my office um, at GSA was, um, you know, every once in a while, when we've got a small project, let the design, let the people who review design all the time do some pencils down work, to use a a dated expression. I mean, who uses pencils anymore? Um, but it, and and I still believe that because um, if you spend your entire career reviewing other people's work, it makes you grouchy, and you end up playing a game of gotcha, where you just want to find something wrong. But this is not a small project. This is a big one, and it warranted going outside and getting some really impressive talent, and I would like to compliment Hartman Cox because it's really, gosh, a world of difference. Um, and I will stop there.
Wow. Um, I I endorse those comments. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon?
Uh, endorsed comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Davis?
Uh, no comments from me. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Kozart?
Uh, yes, uh, no comments. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon.
I want this man to keep going on after what Commissioner Wright said. Um, and we certainly appreciate the comments on behalf of the design team and the the Army team who took, I think, a year ago of all of your comments to heart about the, this new project and its location, and they came back with the, I think it's someone said they hit a home run in terms of responding to that and providing a critically needed facility that's sensitive to the nature of the historical districts within. So I think I will stop there before someone changes their mind and have no more comments.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham?
I have to agree. This uh, looks great, and it it will set up, sit very well in the setting. So uh, thank you for listening to the comments that you received earlier and really taking the appropriate actions to uh, improve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo?
Yes, I think that sort of echoes what others have said, but it it in my time on the Commission, um, this, you know, this is one of the, of the, what do I want to say, sort of stellar projects in the sense that um, it it's, you know, the work that was done to hear and incorporate uh, the comments from the Commission and the revised design, um, you know, leaves us all with the glowing, these glowing responses, which is, you know, which is, which, you know, highlights our our work here in the Commission when we see this. The um, I really appreciate the, you know, the work, and especially as we've said, okay, I'll see it again, the listening and responding in a way that um, makes everybody's work easier as we move on. So, thank you to that. So, thank you to that, you know, to the folks who've, who've done that work.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo, and Vice Chair Hewitt.
Yeah, I would just say, well said, and ditto to the comments of Commissioners Wright, Stidham, McMahon, and all the others. And thank you to our staff too. So, that's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt, and I will only say, I mean, it's impressive. It's just dramatic. I think what it does is not only reflect the fact that our comments were heard, but it almost sets a new standard for some of this work where we're working in both a historic environment, but also, you know, in a very beautiful natural environment. I have to congratulate the design team on preserving the natural trees, the native trees that were there, the pedestrian connections, and, you know, providing something that is just so attractive for our service people to live in. And I think, you know, I can just imagine going there if I were living there, if I were housed there. And it's just really, it's an outstanding example, and it sets a new, a new standard, I think, for some of the work that we have to review. So I just want to echo everyone's comments, but just congratulate the team. And again, thanks staff for that excellent presentation. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Then Ms. Koster, could you please confirm the motion in the second and take the roll call vote?
Sure. Vice Chair Hewitt made the motion to approve preliminary site and building plans for the Personnel Barracks, and Commissioner Stidham seconded. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Warren?
Abstain.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. The motion has carried. And now we're moving on to the last agenda item. 6F is a request to approve the final site development plans for Phase Two of Constitution Gardens Rehabilitation. Our presentation is by Ms. Shipman. Ms. Shipman, are you ready? We can see your PowerPoint. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. The National Park Service in partnership with the Trust for the National Mall submitted final development plans for Phase Two of the Rehabilitation of Constitution Gardens. This second phase of rehabilitation focuses on the lake area and received NCPC preliminary approval in September of last year. The National Park Service plans to develop a visitor pavilion as well as the remainder of the surrounding landscape at a later date to achieve the complete vision of Constitution Gardens. As a reminder, the commission's preliminary review comments were strongly supportive of the design approach, but recommended the applicant further activate the space for children and families in this phase or at a future phase of rehabilitation, refine the design to improve the visitor experience, and incorporate additional plantings to support pollinators. Overall, the final site development plans are consistent with the previous approval and generally responsive to the commission's comments. Here is the illustrative site plan that was submitted at preliminary review. And this is the updated plan. A few of the changes include adjustments to the limit of work, accessibility improvements, increased shade trees and seating and activity areas, and updates to the plant and materials palettes and lighting design. NPS is planning to replace the existing comfort station and to construct an additional comfort station as a separate project that will serve visitors in this area. In response to commission comments at the previous review, the applicant has designated zones for future nature play areas shown in green. These play areas will not be developed at this phase of rehabilitation, but will be part of a later fundraising and artist selection effort in partnership with the Trust for the National Mall. As the plans are developed, staff recommends that the play areas closest to the events and gathering spaces be prioritized for construction to provide increased visibility to families visiting the National Mall and participating in Mark N. Parks programming. These are some examples of the type of nature play areas envisioned by the applicant team. And this is a zoom in of the event plaza terraces and lake ring plaza area at the east end of the lake. The updated design of this area includes new accessible pathways flanking the terrace at the north and south, an additional row of shade trees at the event plaza, and a change in materials for the lake ring plaza from wood decking to stone. Here you can see one of the proposed accessible pathways surrounded by woodland planting and trees. These pathways connect the event plaza to the lake path below. And a view of the shaded flexible seating areas at the edge of the event plaza and terraces with the additional row of trees. These are diagrams of the diversity of tree planting proposed, as well as the zones for understory planting, including woodland, meadow, wetland, color garden, and lawn areas. As a highly visible cultural landscape, the applicant has developed a plant palette to achieve the historic aesthetic and ecological goals of the project while aiming to ensure that the site is maintainable and resilient over time. In response to commission recommendations and public comment, the applicant updated the plant palette to include several species to support pollinators, including several milkweeds. In some cases, non-native species have been included in the proposed rehabilitation that were part of the original design and noted as significant in the cultural landscape inventory. Overall, the proposed plant palette meets the intent of NCPC's Pollinator Best Practices Resource Guide. The lighting plan has been updated to remove the low bollards along the lake path and replace them with historic Washington Globe poles at the outside edge of the path. This is a view from Siner's Island where bollard lighting will be installed around the island perimeter. You can also see the Washington Globe lighting along the lake path beyond. A few of the services have updated materials, including asphalt rather than cobble paving around the lake path. And this shows the selected wood decking with wood curbs along the lake ring, a lighter material than the previously proposed cobble paving. This is a view of the lake ring with this updated wood material. Finally, this is a view of the updated lake path design with asphalt paving and a raised stone curb along the lake. Staff recommends the commission approve the final site development plans for the Phase Two Rehabilitation of Constitution Gardens, with the comments highlighted throughout the presentation and listed here. I would like to introduce the National Park Service Superintendent Jeff Reinbold, who is present to make a few remarks about the project, and I'll also note that members of the applicant team from PWP Landscape Architecture and Hensel Phelps are available to answer any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Thank you, Chair Goodman. To the Commissioners, this remains one of our top priorities. I've had the chance to be in front of you a number of times, talk about how important this is to us. That has not changed at all. We're very eager to not only enliven this part of the mall, but make sure the mall is looking its best for all the attention we're going to receive in 2026 for the 250th. I do want to thank the Commissioners for your review and comments, and appreciate the collaboration with the staff. I think you'll agree, this has gotten better with each iteration. I thought the first version was pretty good, but we're really excited about the final version here. And I also want to acknowledge the design team, who we think have hit a home run with this, and particularly the Trust for the National Mall. Without their support and leadership and fundraising, this would remain just a great idea. So, thank you again for your support on this. It is a top priority for us, and we're eager to go to construction soon. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Shipman, but also thank you Superintendent Reinbold. We are grateful for our partnership with you on this project. And we have one person signed up to provide testimony. And I take this back. Are there questions for Superintendent Reinbold or Ms. Shipman at this point in time? Any questions? From the Commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Then we do have one person signed up to provide testimony. Mr. Burn, you have three minutes to provide testimony. Please let us know when you're ready.
Yes, I'm ready. Again, my testimony relates to the plant palette for this project. The NPS has responded satisfactorily to many of my initial concerns about the palette. However, the palette does not, still does not conform to all the recommendations of the NCP's guide, Pollinator Guide. The guide highlights the need to plant common milkweed, as I've said numerous times. This is really the only one that really supports monarch butterfly populations. It's commonly planted. However, the NPS has not agreed to add this valuable plant to its palette after being given due consideration. The NCPC, the NPS, National Park Service, claims that the plant will volunteer naturally and will most likely spontaneously appear in Constitution Gardens. This is very unlikely. Evidently, the National Park Service really doesn't know too much about what's in the area. There's only about, there's only about two or three sites within a mile that has any of this Constitution Gardens that has any milkweed. And one is a National History Museum, and others are the American Indian, the other ones are Department of Agriculture. The seeds can't come, won't have anywhere to come from. Very few seeds will reach the gardens, and even less will germinate there. Further, if the NPS does not plant common milkweed, park maintenance personnel will undoubtedly believe that it is a weed and will quickly remove it. The NPS won't be able to control this, and they won't know what is happening. Please therefore ask the NPS to add common milkweed to his plant palette. There's really no good reason not to do it. It does spread, but it's easily controlled. The NPS states that it will reinstall some native plants if they are not invasive. This is dangerous, as I often said. It usually takes many years for people to recognize that native plants are invasive and to add them to invasive plant lists. By that time, it is often too late to stop the plant's spread. For example, it took 100 years to recognize a Japanese honeysuckle was invasive after it was first introduced to the United States. As a result, the plant is now very difficult to control. Please therefore ask the NPS to plant only species that are native to the national capital region. It's very interesting to see if they're planting weeping willow because it already exists there. Unfortunately, weeping willow is on Arlington County's list of invasive plants. I mean, maybe it's useful or cultural landscape or something, but it is invasive. You just don't plant things like this. I mentioned this in my letter. The NPS, the National Park Service, has modified its meadow design to be 50% grasses and 50% forbs, which are, forbs are flowering plants. However, grasses will wind pollinate, don't produce nectar, which butterflies and moths and other adult pollinators need to survive. The NCP guide therefore recommends that meadow plantings contain a high percentage of forbs. To conform this to another federal guidance, please ask the NPS to ensure that at least 75% of its meadow plantings will be forbs. Again, it's a question of doing things right, rather than just getting some idea that 50/50 is better because they said that it may provide a better structure or something for forbs, for the forbs.
Three minutes.
Really won't. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Whoops. Okay, here we go. Thank you very much, Mr. Burn, for your comments. Do Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Burn? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the final site development plans with comments for Phase Two of the Constitution Gardens Rehabilitation?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Vice Chair Hewitt. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner McMahon. We are now open for discussions and comments on this project. Can everyone please turn on your cameras? We'll start the deliberations with Commissioner Stidham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As most of you know, this was a bicentennial project that was done very quickly and turned out to be not so easy to keep maintaining. This new design with everyone's health, I think will be a vast improvement and will be able to sustain the test of time. So, we appreciate the review and comments from staff as well as Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
I appreciate the responsiveness that we heard to the comments. And in full support of this revised plan, really appreciate the work on it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner, Vice Chair Hewitt.
I just, I think it's beautiful, and I thank everyone for listening to us. No other comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Now, I appreciate the revisions made by the project applicant in response to comments made previously. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Wright.
You know, I'm surprised, I had forgotten that this was a bicentennial project because by the time I was a freshman in college, it was, which I won't name the date, it was already sort of falling apart. I think the lake ring has been somewhat controversial, and I don't know why. I think it's one of the loveliest features of the entire design, and I really like the wood. I think that's a great selection of materials. And with all due respect to Mr. Burn, I think we're going, we have, we're very much in danger of going overboard on the milkweed and having a monoculture landscape. You just can't. I appreciate his enthusiasm, and I understand the science, but I also think there are other considerations when it comes to a plant palette. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon.
Yeah, I'm very pleased with it. Thank you for the presentation, and can't wait to get my fishing rod out. Because it's supposed to seed that with fish, I think. That's what I'm.
I've heard that as well. Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Davis?
No comments from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Warren?
No comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Cozart?
Excellent presentation. Thanks to the staff for their work and excited about the play areas that are a part of that. Certainly, one thing we learned from Beyond Granite is how interested people are in play areas and other areas when they're at the mall, so this is great.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks to the staff for their presentation. And just harking back to, what was it, I think, a hot fall Friday, we actually walked this along with the rest of Beyond Granite and got a history lesson on how quickly this thing was first built back for the bicentennial. So, it's great that the efforts that National Park Service has taken to take this thing to the next step and make it a more enduring area for both tourists and citizens in the area to go visit and maybe all join out there with fishing poles when it's done. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon, and I just want to echo what my fellow Commissioners have said, and I think it's awesome. It's a, it shows real, great development, and I was there on that walk in August, and it was really hot. And I'm excited that these improvements are going to be made for the 250th anniversary. And I love the children's play area introduced. I think that is something we learned from the Beyond Granite experiences well. Is that engaging people, engaging citizens of all ages in these places, these special places, is really critically important and can't start too soon. So, happy to see that. Are there any further comments or questions? Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Koster, could you confirm the motion in the second and call the roll, please?
Certainly. Vice Chair Hewitt made the motion to approve the final site development plans for Phase Two of the Constitution Gardens Rehab. And Commissioner McMahon seconded. Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Warren?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion clearly passes. This concludes our open session agenda, and our next regular commission meeting will be held on Thursday, April 4th at 1:00 PM Eastern Time. And if there is no further business, this session stands adjourned. Thank you all.